Ladies and gentlemen, the June 11th, 2001 meeting of the Halton City Council is called to order. We have a guest tonight to our invocation, recently retired Dwayne Green, pastor of the Birdville Baptist Church. Dwayne, will you come forward and give our invocation, please? And welcome.
I appreciate the opportunity to be with you, and thank you for all of us, for all the time that you spend taking care of our city. May we pray. Our Lord, we're grateful for the strength that you've given us, and for the wisdom and the dedication that you've given our council, our mayor, others who work so hard, and serve our community, and create within us the desire to be good neighbors. We're thankful for this moment, for the time that we've come together, for all the relationships of friendship, and of concern for each other's welfare. We're thankful for this moment. We realize, our Lord, that we live in a very diversified community, society, and we're here to represent you, and to represent all of the people, to be a part of the good things that you've bestowed upon our world, our country, and our community. Thank you once again for the very special privilege to be a good citizen in our America. In our Lord's name, amen. Thank you.
Counsel member Avery, would you lead us into the place of the lead?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands: one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ladies and gentlemen, in the audience, and those who are watching over our local TV cable station, we welcome you to our meeting tonight. The first item we have on our agenda is two proclamations to be presented, and I will make those presentations now. The first one of these is to Birdville Elementary as a national Blue Ribbon School in Halton City, and Principal Martha White, if you'll join me at the lectern, we will make that presentation. I want to introduce to all of you the principal of Birdville Elementary, Martha White. She happens to have the same last name as I do, but we're not related, but I would be honored if we were. I've had the opportunity to see this lady excel in her leadership in our public school system for a number of years, and we come tonight to honor her, and her staff, and her students at Birdville Elementary with this proclamation. Whereas it has been announced from the office of U.S. Senator Phil Graham that Birdville Elementary School has been named a national Blue Ribbon School, and whereas Birdville Elementary was first named a Blue Ribbon School finalist by the State Educational Department, and whereas officials from the U.S. Department of Education review applications and visit classrooms to recognize outstanding public and private schools that exemplify excellent educational practices, and whereas the U.S. Department of Education's prestigious Blue Ribbon Schools program is one of the highest national honors that a school can achieve, now therefore I, Calvin White, Mayor of the City of Halton City, on behalf of the entire City Council, do hereby urge all citizens to join me in commending the students, teachers, parents, administrators, and the staff members of Birdville Elementary School for their dedicated effort and are deserving of this prestigious honor, and we wish to express our sincere gratitude for the pride and honor brought to the City of Halton City and to the state of Texas. Martha? This is really an honor, and we are so pleased to have a nationally recognized Blue Ribbon School in Halton City. Martha, would you like to address the audience tonight?
I would. I'd like to just take a few moments to help you understand the significance of this award, because the National Blue Ribbon Award is not known much outside the educational setting. So I want you to know the process that we went through, and what an achievement it is, because this time last year, after getting input from our staff, four teachers and myself sat down and started meeting once a week to fill out a 40-page application to apply. And we sent that in September to the Texas Education Agency, and they reviewed it. They had panels of people that read it, four different people read it, and there were 100 applications that were sent in from all over Texas, and they chose 37 schools to be named Texas Blue Ribbon Schools, and we were one of those. Five schools from our district did apply, and we were very proud that we didn't want the others to win, but we were very proud that we made the cut. And so at that point, we reviewed the application again, and then we sent it to Washington, DC, and another panel of reviewers looked at it and reviewed it, and out of the 37 that were sent, 32 received word that they would get a personal site visit from Washington, the U.S. Department of Education. So we made that cut, and that was a great thing. And we spent two days with Dr. Corkle, who is a professor of school law in the University of Arizona. He looked at all of our school. Matter of fact, we toured the community. He wanted to see where our students lived, and what our community was like. And after two days, he wrote a 30-page report on our school, which we did not get to see. And so we had to wait till May to find out if we were going to be a national Blue Ribbon School. And in May, we did get the phone call from Senator Phil Graham's office, saying that we were now a national Blue Ribbon School, which is the highest award any school can receive. And we're very proud that we are one of 264 across the nation that are national Blue Ribbon Schools. And next fall, in October, representatives from our school will be going to Washington, DC, to have dinner with President Bush, and he will be presenting us with an award at that time. So we're very proud, and I want you all to know the part that this community has played in us achieving that award, because one of the things that they look at is what is your community involvement as a school? And we are fortunate to live, or be, our school to be in Halton City, because Halton City, the city officials, the council, really strives to keep this a community, and that's the feel that I have. I try and encourage us to, whenever possible, shop locally. We use Krogers down the street. I bank here personally. Our school bank account is in the local bank, and it's really nice to be able to walk in, say my bank, and know the president, or the vice president, and he can call me by name. So that's the kind of feel that we have in Halton City. And our visitor was able to pick that up as I drove him around and showed him the city hall and different places in our community. So he understood that we were very close knit. And one of the things that Halton City does is that your involvement with the schools, such as the DARE program, the beautification program, the decorating the Christmas tree, fireman nap that comes faithfully every year to do our fire education, fire prevention education, and the city council in itself that supports us. It's a city that celebrates when we have success, and we celebrate when the city has success. I know when Halton City received their Texas Beautification Award. I was there with Fran Burns to meet one of the representatives that was coming to present that. So it's a real community feel, and I think that's what makes Birdville so special, is that we have that kind of involvement, and we really appreciate it. So I want to thank you, and let you know as a community, that this is your award too, and I hope you're proud of our school as we are. Thank you.
I have a second proclamation to present tonight, and Mr. Roberts, Principal of Halton High School, will you join me here at the lectern? And I believe you have a guest with you, and we'll allow you to introduce him in just a moment.
All right.
We have outstanding schools in Halton City, and that adds to the quality of life, and that helps everybody as we try to raise the bar and make Halton City truly proud and progressive. This proclamation tonight says, whereas Halton High School has a tradition of excellence in academics, sports, band, and other outstanding organizations, and whereas the accomplishments and achievements of Halton High School's young people deserve recognition and commendation, and whereas Halton High School should be commended for its excellent educators and hard-working staff that has helped shape Halton High School into a school that it is today, and whereas the citizens of Halton City desired to honor the students and faculty for the numerous achievements and resounding accomplishments, now therefore I, Calvin White, Mayor of Halton City, on behalf of the City Council and the citizens of Halton City, do hereby publicly commend Halton High School, and wish to express our sincere gratitude for the pride and the honor you have brought to our community, and extend to you our best wishes in your future endeavor. This gentleman, I believe this is your first year at Halton High School.
Yes, sir.
And he has accomplished great things to make all of us proud, and I'm going to, as I present this proclamation to you, that we hope you'll display proudly, I'm going to give you some time at the lectern, if you would, to tell us some of the good things that are happening at Halton High School, that you have to celebrate in this first year of your leadership, as well as introduce your guest, if he has anything to say.
All right, that'd be great. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Let me introduce Kip Woodruff to you first. I'd like him to talk just a little bit before I have a few things to brag about Halton City and Halton High School. Kip Woodruff, he always jokes that when he dies and we cut him open, he will bleed Buffalo blood. It'll be orange. He's great to the community, great for the community, one of the greatest supporters that I've been around in education for 21 years, and never seen a supporter quite like him. But I want to introduce Kip Woodruff, and he wants to stand up and say just a few things as a guest. Kip?
Well, I get real excited, and I'm excited to be here tonight. I talked to a gentleman out in the hall, and he and I both agreed that we got Buffalo blood in our blood, in our veins, and I get excited. I just get so excited when I talk about Birdville, the Birdville School District. As a parent of three, a Birdville School Advocate, and a member of the Campus Planning Committee at Halton High School, I'm an ardent supporter of public education, and I get excited about Halton High School. Now, time doesn't permit me to go through all the many exciting things that are happening at Halton, however, as the chairman of the Campus Security Committee, I want to share with you how we are making, constantly making our campus safe for your citizens and our students. In Birdville, the school district, in the Birdville School District, security starts at the top, where we have a very caring and wonderful school board and superintendent. On the local campus, Mr. Roberts sets the tone. This individual, as he must be enthusiastic, patient, wise, and at the same time, have guts to impose firm discipline. On the outside, security begins with our three-man unarmed security force, which is equipped with golf carts. Next year will be the fifth year for this group, and they are an essential part of our security. In the building, security is enhanced by our teachers, who devote one of their planning periods to staffing checkpoints at each outside door and on each floor. Students must wear picture identification tags at all times. We have zero tolerance for tardies. Doors are locked when the bell rings, and late students must report to end school suspension for that period. The result of this rule is that contrary to what your students may say, they can be on time to class. In fact, many teachers tell me they start now before the bell rings. Now, don't punch that kid too hard. I saw that. Now, security is not accomplished just by having rules. At Halton, we believe a positive environment, which includes lots of praise, is just as important as a firm hand. PALS is a group of student volunteers who are specially trained to be peer mediators between students who are having conflict. High on Life is a club that is targeted at students who do not want to be in band, choir, or some other outside organization, but just want to have fun and a positive experience in high school. And of course, all of our organizations would not be successful if we didn't have one of the strongest faculties in Texas. Now, up to this point, I've talked about Halton High School, and how you can feel secure, and parents can feel secure, about what we're doing on the faculty and the staff level. But I need to mention how very, very important Chief Billy Hammett, one of the finest chiefs that I know in the Halton City Police Department, are to Halton High School. Because of this city's generosity and compassion, we have an extremely strong Student Resource Officer Program. Officer Jesse Odell is our current uniformed officer. I cannot tell you how many parents have complimented your city and expressed a sense of confidence in seeing his patrol car and Officer Odell at the school. He is the consummate SRO. He fits in perfectly with our philosophy of positive reinforcement. The teachers especially appreciate his dedication to being visible by being in the halls. He is friendly and kind to the students, attends many of the extracurricular activities, and understands the delicate balance of being a police officer in a public education environment. He honors your city, and he honors the badge. I consider his presence to be of vital significance and vital importance to our campus security. The other critical component that your city supplies that affects our school is the municipal court under Judge Jack Minow. Now, implementing rules and issuing citations for such things as truancy, violence, and theft is useless unless the court supports the action. At Halton High School, we have the knowledge that if a case is referred to the Municipal Court of Halton City, the case will receive fair but firm backing in the court. The current court has been a major factor in improving school attendance and enhancing the security of our campus. As you can see, I'm very concerned about security. I want our teachers and our students to feel safe. Security requires a tremendous amount of energy from a lot of people that mostly goes unnoticed until there is an incident. Lack of activity breeds complacency, which is why it is very important for leaders to draw what I call the unpopular line. My confidence soars for a safe high school because of the courageous character of this council, mayor, Chief Hammett, Officer Odell, Judge Minow, and Principal Roberts. And to all of you, I say thank you. And I invite everyone to the Halton Richmond Football Game, November the ninth, when once again the Buffalos will annihilate the Rebels.
I don't know whether I need to follow that speech or not. Mayor White and the City Council, with great pride that I stand before you tonight, it's a passion, and we talk about young people and the great things that we do at Halton High School. My first year at Halton High School can be described in one word, and that is wow. What an unbelievable group of young adults we have here in Halton City. And the secret to their success, and I believe this in all my heart, is just not our great faculty and staff, and it's just not our great student body, and it's not the parents, but it's a combination of that with the community and our elementary schools, our middle schools. The things that we do, that we work together and we grow, is unbelievable. And when I say wow, we talk about Halton City. We talk about the great things we do. I will tell you this, I've learned this in one year, and I believe this too, that Halton City is the best-kept secret in Tarrant County. Halton High School is the best-kept secret in Tarrant County. And I just wanted, just a few things that we're doing with the help of the community and everybody involved, I wanted to brag just a little bit, and we will display this proclamation with pride. At Halton High School, we had two National Merit Scholars, one National Hispanic Scholar, one National Achievement Scholar, seven commended National Merit Scholars, and we, our student body was awarded over 1.75 billion, a million, billion, I wish billion, million dollars in scholarship money. Our band, state qualifiers, we finished seventh in the state of all the bands. Our BPA, which is a business organization, had two national qualifiers and eight torch award recipients. Our cheerleaders won the spirit stick at camp. They had two All-Star cheerleaders, fourth place in ACA national competition. Our choir, I don't want to brag about our choir, we were one of the few choirs that was asked to perform at the national convention. National Convention invited elementary choirs, middle school choirs, high school choirs, college choirs, and professional choirs to perform. In that, our choir performed three concerts, as every choir that was invited to perform did. After it was over, it came to our attention, through the convention people, we were the only choir out of all choirs to receive three standing ovations at every concert that we performed in. It's unbelievable. Our cross-country team, we were regional qualifiers. Our debate team finished second in the state. Hardeka had a national qualifier. FCC LA, we have fifth in state, and we're going to the nationals. Our football team, district champions. Our golf team, regional qualifiers. Gymnastics, state qualifier. Our quiz team finished tops. We were the area champs. Our robotics, seven national championships, and we were one of the few high schools that is invited to participate in the Mars Rover mission in 2003. Our student body will be working on that mission. Our swim team, two academic All-Americans. Theater, the Buckley Awards presented, we won four outstanding awards. Our track, regional qualifiers. UIL Academics, 13 students were regional, and we finished with five in the state competition. Wrestling, five district champions. Folks, this is the best-kept secret. We did a tremendous job. And again, I want to thank every one of you that has contributed and a part of it. And for the first time ever in school history, every indication that we have, we will be a recognized campus at Halton High School. That means our top scores are up, our attendance is up, our dropout rate is down. We have met the criteria, and for the first time, we'll be a recognized campus. And that has contributed to the hard work of our student body, our faculty, staff, the community, our municipal courts, our officers that are involved, everybody sitting here. I just can't say enough how much I appreciate all the hard work this city's done. As Principal first year, I want to apologize to the City of Halton City and the council. I made a mistake. Our diplomas read "Halton High School," and it says "Fort Worth, Texas." And, in a city, now, a little bit of history about that. Now, I went back and checked, because in my hurry, I approved the diploma that had been used last year, and the year before that, and the year before that, and the year before that, and as I did some research, in 1977, I think they had Birdville Independent School District instead of the city. But I overlooked that. To take pride in our city and the things that we accomplish and we do, I can guarantee this, our diploma next year will say Graduate of Halton High School in Halton City. We will change that, and again, I apologize. Again, I want to extend an invitation to everyone, get involved, get involved in these young people's lives. Thank you again, and I appreciate the opportunity, and let's have a great year. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next presentation tonight will be made by Councilmember Hurley to Mr. Art Geisman for his service on the zoning board of adjustment. Mr. Geisman, will you please join Councilmember Hurley at the podium, please?
Mr. Geisman has put in enough time on the zoning board of adjustments to retire. He's been a real backbone of it, but on behalf of the council, mayor, the City of Halton City, I would like to acknowledge your service on the zoning board of adjustment with this plaque, which is presented to Mr. Art Geisman, board member, in grateful appreciation for your years of outstanding service and devotion on the zoning board of adjustment from 1978 to 2001, which is 23 years. Art, say a word.
Appreciate that. Well, it's just kind of became a part of my life, but I enjoyed every minute of it. I got to work with all these guys that's about, and a lot with Helen, and they've all been so helpful and so nice and everything, and I just wish I could accomplish a little more. But, and I appreciate the things that we did do, and I hope that most of the city's citizens have been real nice, and it was wonderful to be working for all of you folks. And God bless you, and good luck.
Geisman is being seated, I'll tell you, I had the privilege of serving with him on the zoning board of adjustment about 10 years ago, and he is one tremendous guy, the kind that we're proud to have as a citizen in Halton City. So again, Mr. Geisman, thank you for your 23 years of service to the zoning board of adjustment. Our fourth and final presentation tonight, Mr. Rod Bland with the Halton City Public Library has a presentation to make to the mayor and the council from the library.
Mayor, City Council, members of city administration, as you know, we are beginning our summer reading club this year, and the, two of my librarians are here, Allison Long and Becky Deaton, and we would like to present the council and selected city administrations with summer reading club t-shirts. One thing we did want to note for the public is, in the past, the summer reading club was always for children from grade such-and-such to such-and-such. Well, now it's for children from grade such-and-such up through senior citizens, so anybody who wants to be in the reading club, please join us.
Well, greetings to the mayor, city council, and all the city officials. We are here to present you with your official 2001 Summer Reading Program t-shirt.
Which we are modeling tonight. Isn't it gorgeous? Our kickoff day was June 1st, and it will go on through July 27th. For every five hours the children read, they will earn a prize. The adults, for every 10 hours they read, they will earn a prize. And we're encouraging the adults to participate with their kids. It gives them a good opportunity to have some sit-down quiet time, and it's going to be so hot this summer. It'll give them something to do while they're inside the house besides just watching television. There's nothing good on anyway. It's all reruns. It's all reruns. Our theme this year is "To the Library and Beyond," so we have borrowed the idea from Parker Brothers Monopoly and made Haltonopoly. And one of our library board members, Mr. Travis Royal, and I went throughout the city and took pictures of different things in Halton City, such as the fire stations, 1, 2, 3, and our fire administration. We've taken pictures of McDonald's, because they're one of our sponsors. They gave us some coupons to use as prizes, and other things. And we've made the tracking posters to look like the property cards of Monopoly, so the children and adults, as they progress, they can move their marker down the board to see how they're doing. We already have our first recipient of her 40 hours. It's an adult. She's already received all four of her prizes and her t-shirt. So guys, you've got competition. And please don't stop at 40 hours. Keep going. On the 31st of July, we will have our big finale. We have a special guest coming, and we'll have a big party, and everybody gets their certificate. So at the bottom of your certificate, it will tell you how many hours you have won. Where am I going now?
We have programs two days a week on Wednesdays and Fridays from 3 to 4. We generally do a craft one day, have special guests come and entertain the second day of the week. We are also encouraging children to keep reading, enjoy reading, and find new worlds in books that we have in the library. We invite you all to come in and register, everybody, since we are opening this up to adults this year. We'd love to have you come see us and register for summer reading program. We have approximately 300 registered right now. We'd love for you to be part of that. Right now, we would like to go ahead and present you with your official 2001 Summer Reading Program t-shirt.
Thank you, Allison and Becky. Thank you, Allison and Becky.
Do you read like here?
Yes, ma'am.
Each agenda's got to be worth at least two hours.
It's got to be 40 hours there.
Thank you very much, ladies, for these t-shirts. We will wear them with pride and we appreciate the reading program you have in place. Thank you. We come now to our consent agenda. The items on the agenda are self-explanatory and we'll take the consent agenda and act on items number four through 19, with the exception of number 17. Council member Avery?
Mayor, I make a motion, we approve the consent agenda.
With the exception of...
Number 17 being tabled, correct.
Seventeen, which will be tabled until a later time.
Correct.
Okay. Do we have a second? If we could, can I have a second to that motion? Council member Hurley, council member Markham?
Yes, ma'am. I will be voting for the consent agenda with the exception of item number 12. And for the record, I will be abstaining on item number 12.
Okay. And council member Henderson?
I'll be doing the same thing and I will be abstaining from item number 11.
Okay. You have the motion, the second, with the abstentions noted. Gentlemen, if you will, register your vote. And that carries. Okay? Our next item on the agenda, we have three public hearings to conduct tonight. Mr. Alfrink, if you will, item number 20.
For the mayor and council, item number 20 is consideration and/or action regarding approval of the application of Ralph Yates for a conditional use permit to operate an auto sales facility on property zone M2, heavy industrial district on block 17R1, 17R2, and 18 block 23. East Ridge addition containing approximately .4882 acres of land located on the northwest corner of northeast 28th Street and Edith Lane, known as 2909 Edith Lane. This item, along with the accompanying ordinance, has been reviewed very carefully by our planning director and it was passed by a unanimous vote by our planning and zoning commission.
Okay. Since this is a public hearing, I will open the public hearing at this time. Mr. Yates, are you in the audience? I don't believe Mr. Yates is here. Anyone in the audience wish to speak in favor of this item? Anyone in the audience wish to speak in opposition to this item? There being none, to speak either way, I will entertain a motion to address the corresponding ordinance number 02001-028-15. Council member Williams?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, we, probably just for the record, should you read into that we closed the public hearing on that?
Yes, the public hearing is closed.
That's no problem.
Thank you.
That's no problem. I make a motion, we approve ordinance number 0-2001-028-15.
Okay. And council member Markham?
Second.
Uh, council member Avery?
That was for a second.
Okay. You have the motion and the second. Any further discussion on this item? There being none, gentlemen, if you'll register your vote. And that carries by unanimous vote. Item number 21 is the consideration and/or action regarding approval of the application of Dennis Clark on behalf of Encore Restaurants to revise to PD site plan, site plan on tract 1B and 1N of the INSTAP survey being A-1422 town appraisal district maps containing approximately four acres of land located on the east side of North Beach Street in the 6200 block of North Beach Street. Mr. Alfrink, anything you wish to add to this, please?
Mr. Mayor, only that, again, this item has also been reviewed very carefully by our planning director and was passed unanimously by our planning and zoning commission.
Okay. This too is a public hearing. We'll open the public hearing at this time. Mr. Clark, are you in the audience? I can't believe Mr. Clark is not in the audience. Do we have anyone in the audience now that I've opened the public hearing? Do we have anyone in the audience wishing to speak in favor of this agenda item?
My name is Mark Smith. I'm here for Mr. Clark. He had a conflict that he could not reschedule, although he tried and he asked me to speak on his behalf.
Would you give not only your name, but your address as well?
Sure. 8150 North Central Expressway, Dallas, Texas. As we presented in the planning and zoning commission, we are requesting approval to modify the PD to allow us to build a series of one-story and two-story office buildings only. There'll be a brick veneer with a residential design similar to what you've seen in some of the other suburban markets. Will be landscaped over and above the minimum requirements of the city, as well as putting a walk, a walk trail on the back for, for our tenants to be able to come in there. This is going to be an office medical development only. The first phases will be the two buildings that will front the main street, as you've probably seen in your site plan. We feel that there is a market for this. We feel like this would be a very nice product, a high-quality product that would complement the market area and we think we can hopefully offer a product that's not in the current area at this time. And we are requesting your approval.
Members of the council, any questions or comments for Mr. Smith? Okay. There being none, thank you, Mr. Smith. We may have some later, but for the moment, we don't. Anyone else in the audience wishing to speak in favor of this, of this agenda item? Okay. Anyone wishing to speak against this agenda item? Yes, sir. Are you Dale Smith?
Dale Davis.
Mr. Smith was the last gentleman. Yes, Mr. Davis. If you would, give us your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, yes, my name is Dale Davis. I reside at 3904 West Area Lane in Halton City, 76137.
Okay.
Mayor and members of the council, thank you for this opportunity. We are in strong opposition to the planned rezoning. One of the reasons, I was the very first home contracted in the area called Fossil Beach. I contracted for my home in August 1995. I contacted the city of Halton City then to find out if there would be anything that would impair my view. I was planning on paying a premium for my lot, so therefore I did not want to have anything that would cause an eyesore or prohibit my, my view. Just this year, I built a extended patio onto my backyard to, to enjoy the creek and the view there. As you all know, the, my property goes all the way to the very creek itself. On May 21st, then we received a notice from the planning and zoning commission that they would be considering rezoning. So we quickly pulled ourselves together, our homeowners that were affected. On May 22nd, we made the P&amp;Z meeting that evening and answered a lot of questions and showed our strong opposition to it. We since then have found out that there's very little or nothing we can do because of the property owners. And I will say this, the property owners bought this land, again, remember, I contracted my home in August 1995 and they bought this land in June of 1996. So, and I, so from now on, I learned a great lesson. I will make sure that I have things in writing. But we as property owners need your help in making sure that we do not have any devaluation of our property because of it. We very much want to protect our property values. So we need your help with that and we have some concerns. We want to make sure that the trees that line the Fossil Creek area, that none of those will be taken out. They're part of the beautification there and they're also very important to some of the wildlife in the area. Secondly, one of the Encore restaurants that Dennis Clark has was put in called Sonic. And for those residential members that back up to the Sonic, they are really frustrated about the neon lights that go on to 10, 11 o'clock at night. And of course, they can hear every order that, a burger and fries that is ordered there. And so although they didn't show up, I have, have written, put, put together a petition in opposition and would like to enter that into record.
Do you have that petition?
Yes.
If you'll hand that to councilman, or to Mr. Pulisca, we will receive that into the record. You may continue your comments.
We understand that the property owners are planning to put in landscaping in the front, which looks very nice. The architecture that Dennis Clark showed me after the last P&amp;Z meeting looks very nice. However, I will say, and, and the P&amp;Z commission told me that this was very, very good standards for Halton City. And with all due respect, and I mean all due respect, maybe the standard should be risen from now on. Maybe the bar is too low. Either way, we look at it as homeowners, we won't get the advantage of looking at that nice architecture in the front. We'll still be looking at rooftops in the back and nothing to block that. They plan on putting 36...
Excuse me, you have one minute.
Okay. They, they plan on having 36 trees planted into the rear of the buildings and we would like to have your help in designing a little bit better landscaping position for that. Any questions or comments or thoughts?
And members of the council, any questions or comments for Mr. Davis? Council member Jennings?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just for point of clarification with the rest of the council, the petition that was just presented had seven names in opposition. Since James took the, took the petition with him, I thought you might need to know that. Also, as the liaison to the planning and zoning commission, the night that this case was heard before planning and zoning, originally, the applicant had asked for C3 zoning in this particular area. And as a result of the interaction that night, the applicant agreed to drop from C3 to C2 zoning on all of this property. So that's strictly for point of information. Thank you.
Council member Williams?
Yes, sir. I'm not sure if I'm the scale on this, but the best thing for you, you're approximately 200 foot from the service road or 200 foot from Beach Street. Is that, is that about what, right? My property, my home? The edge of your property? I'm actually lot 15, if you're looking at lot 15. I'm actually lot 15. And, and the best I can do without a slide rule is say that you're probably 200, 220 foot from Beach Street? And that would be a guess, yes, I'm not sure of the exact... Okay. When, you said in 95, when you purchased this home, you checked to see what was going to be on that property and they told you it was what? It's going to be unrestricted and there was going to be, be nothing planned or zoned in that particular area. You'll notice just to the north, excuse me, just to the south of there, there's a very large plot of land too that is located here on the, the map, which is supposed to not be any commercial development or anything else as well. Okay. And who was it told you that it wasn't going to be anything there? I called, I called, I probably not, I didn't talk to Helen, I don't know, but I talked to someone within the, the city government planning and zoning commission at that time. I had gone through this once before in Colorado, so I knew a little bit about my, the homework I needed to do. Well, just looking at this plan, you're approximately, let's say 250 for safety from Beach Street. I would have thought that something would have went in on Beach Street without being a major corridor. I wouldn't have thought that that would always, and that's the reason I'm trying to get to, who would have told you that nothing would have went there? I know, I've heard that before, Mr. Williams, but when I, when I lived in Colorado, I had a similar situation and nothing ever was built behind me. It was completely zoned as it said it was when I bought it all. So I just took them at their word. Right. Well, this is a part of Halton City that's not developed, probably the last part that and just south of, just south of there. And being on Beach Street without being a major corridor, you know, I would see where something would probably eventually be built there, even though for the last 40, 50 years it hadn't. And that's the reason I was just trying to get to who had told you that nothing would go there. I wish I had that information, trust me, I... Do you know what year that was or about when they, I guess in 95, when you purchased your home? Yes, yes, yes. It was, I, probably June, July of 1995 when I was investigating. I signed the contract in August 95. Could it have been when they told you that, that they didn't, there wasn't anything in the plans at that time? Could that have been what they told you when you called up here? Mr. Williams, it's very possible since the land was not purchased till June of 1996. I can see them telling you, no, there's nothing in the plans being built there, but I can't see somebody telling you, you know, there's never going to be anything there. So what, what we would really like as homeowners, is a win-win relationship with the property owner. Sure. Where we can come to a, an agreement to make sure that the architecture and the landscape that they do in the front, that they pay as much attention to the back as they do the After P&amp;Z meeting, I, I met with Mr. Clark and what we really would like, what would, what would make us happy is six to eight-inch trees. They have scheduled there to put in 36 two-inch trees. And that'll take some time for it to grow, to actually make a difference in visibility of not actually seeing the backs rooftops or the backs of buildings. And so we would like to see six to eight-inch trees planted along there and possibly with some shrubs and so forth, just like they're doing the, the very front of the building. So if they could get you the larger trees and some shrubs, something to sort of take away from the back of the building being like that, I think it's going to be office buildings and doctor's office for right now. But we know what the back of a building's going to look like. Do you think that would be pleasing with the people that's on your petition? Yes. It won't satisfy some of them that are backed up to the Sonic right now. Right. But certainly, it'll, it'll help appease some of the others, yes, it will. And no further questions.
Council member Patino?
Yes, Mr. Davis? I certainly sympathize with your feelings. I was part of the process of putting in place our comprehensive land use plan, which is adopted, if my memory serves correctly, in 1995. And at this time, that corridor was, was zoned as a C2. So whoever bought out there, like where you bought your block, you knew that sooner or later, there'd be some commercial building going in there. However, I also feel that your petition about bigger trees or actually will make you feel better. But it's been my experience, I have dealt a lot with trees. I was a golf course super dener for 30 years. And believe me, a two-inch, if it's properly manicured and fertilized and properly cared, will catch up with, with a six-inch tree, especially if it's a container grown. It's something that they have found out that when you grow a tree in a container and then you set it out, for some reason or another, it really grows fast. And, and what I mean by manicure in the proper way, if you prune those trees for three years, one-third every year, from the inside, they will grow faster, whether it be a live oak or red oak. Then there's some, I don't know, I haven't really checked, is that close? I don't know what type of tree they're going to be putting in place. But I feel that those two-inch properly cared for and I don't have any reason to believe that they will not be cared for. I think that that will give... I think that that will give you what you wanted. And so with that being said, that I will be support, I'll be voting to remain as a PD C2. And we might get in with some of the developers and see if they can put in a bigger tree, but.
Bigger tree? Do you think that the developer would be receptive to putting bigger tree? James, could that answer that question, please?
The question is, if you did not hear it, would the developer be open to putting in bigger trees than the two-inch trunk that's currently proposed?
Bigger caliper. The plans actually are calling for a three-inch caliper tree up front, and according to the ordinance, he would need, need a two-inch caliper in the back, meeting the screening requirement, since this district does abut a single-family district. However, this is a PD, and you could set the limitations on the landscaping.
Yeah, well, I know, I heard Mr. Davis say something that in his opinion, I think that we need to raise the bar a little somewhat on this landscaping. And I certainly would like to field the developer and see what they will be receptive to putting bigger caliper trees, maybe a four-inch or three-inch like, like in the front, three-inch all the way around.
If I could bring up an important point also, on your site plan, you'll see that the trees that he will be putting in is past the flood line of the creek. The trees that are in the creek and are four inches or greater must remain as per the ordinance. So he cannot go out and clear cut the creek. In the planned development portion of the ordinance, any tree greater than four inches in diameter must remain. So those trees will be there. Majority of the other trees that he puts in on the landscape are, are to the street side of anything growing along the creek, if you note in your site plan.
With this, Mr. Davis, like you heard, Mr. Pulisca, that any tree that's there already, four-inch or better, will remain? Is this going to help any?
Yes. Is there any, yes, that would be great. But is there any plans to take out any trees along the creek at all?
I don't have the developer plans. According to the site plan, they only show what they're going to be putting. And it shouldn't be any impact of that in the creek area, according to their site plan.
Yeah, in fact, I think it said within 10 feet.
Correct.
Of the creek. So there should not be any, I just wanted for record, just to be on record.
Well, all I have on record would be, this is a site plan submitted.
Okay.
And the site plan submitted would be where it indicates, as you have on the site plan, the creek line and the indication of the location of the buffer. There would be no reason for, for removal of vegetation from the buffer to the creek.
Okay.
However, it's not indicated by the court. But I am not the developer.
Okay. How can we get assurances that, A, no trees along the creek will be taken? Because it's real important, during the summertime, it really enhances the, the beautification of the area, you know, for two ways about it. That's one of the reasons I think the property owner said that he wanted to put some buildings there to attract the right type of tenants. Then, secondly, I think we would very much like for the property owners to, to work with us and work with maybe the council in, in putting in some larger trees or something of that nature in the back, so that our, for instance, as Councilman, it's Patino?
Patino.
Suggested maybe something that would grow very quickly. And I, I'm not a halter, halter culturist, so I don't know one tree really from another, except that I, I spent time with the, the homeowners along that area, and they felt like we would either look at, you know, 36 trees, or maybe 72 trees, but 72 trees may not grow side by side correctly. So maybe six to eight inch trees would do it. Again, we're looking for something just to beautify it, and to keep us from looking at rooftops all the time, and actually, so that we, we have some kind of beautification to our area. And it, and it holds and helps us keep our property values. There's no, I had a real estate agent who wanted to remain anonymous tell me there is no way it's not going to affect your property values. It will diminish your property values.
Anything, Mr. Patino, Councilmember Patino, any other questions?
No, that's just what I have.
Councilmember Williams?
This, for Mr. Pulisca, ownership of the creek that we're talking about behind there, where's the dividing line between the developer and the creek? Does he go down into the creek, or is, he should fall short of the creek?
He will, the, his property line does fall short of the creek. As you see on your site plan, he indicates his property line. Again, the buffer will be 10 feet this side of his property line, which would be 10 feet to the west of his property line, if you look at that buffer. So he, he will follow the top of the bank as it's indicated on your site plan. And if you'll see that, that is at 15-foot top of bank offset that you see to the right of the bottom plan, if you'll follow that line.
Right.
That will be his offset. Now, again, this is a planned development C2. It's already approved PD C2, and this is just a modification of the site plan. So the zoning itself, again, will protect large trees on his property that is zoned for that. I can't guarantee the center line of the creek or any, anything of that, that is not involved in his property.
Right. Well, Mr. Davis's concern, I believe, was the creek. And where the developer developed this, he shouldn't be down in the creek moving any, disturbing anything at all, should he?
His plan doesn't indicate that, but again, I don't have any, any greater detail than the plan.
Could the developer speak on that? Could I call Mr. Smith back up? Do you plan on disturbing the creek at all?
Well, first, I'm, I don't own it.
Right.
So on behalf of Mr. Clark, I think we can only build within our property lines.
I think so. I don't think your equipment should be, you know, of course, equipment does go over property lines occasionally, but we might try to do something today.
It behooves us to try and preserve as much of the natural beauty there as we can, because that's going to affect the values and the rental income that we hope we can achieve also in the property. And I might almost also add that we're hoping, you know, based on the uses that are allowed now, we feel like that we're making a major upgrade to what we're going to put on the property, and in fact, restricting ourselves architecturally and landscape-wise is self-improving us, ourselves, I guess, for lack of a better definition.
Well, to the city attorney, to the city attorney, then, could we make some stipulation that if we approve this, that they not disturb anything in the creek?
I think that would be appropriate, since as you pointed out, Councilmember Williams, they're not supposed to be out there anyway.
Right. I think if we could watch that, Mr. Davis would help police us with that, and keep us informed on that. I, I know the developer wants to put his project in, and he wants it to be, you know, eye-pleasing. And on your house, you want to do the same there. And I think working together, not disturbing the creek, and possibly trying to find out what kind of trees he's going to put in, maybe some trees that grow a little faster, grow taller. And I think you come up to a medium that you and the other seven people that signed the petition could live with.
Anything further, Councilman Williams?
Done.
Thank you. Do we have, thank you, Mr. Davis.
Thank you.
Do we have anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak against this proposal? Okay, there being none, I will, did I have someone raise their hand? Okay. There being none, I will close the public hearing, and we'll move to the corresponding ordinance. Gentlemen, I will entertain a motion regarding ordinance number 0-201-029-15. Councilmember Jennings?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Move to approve 0201-029-15, with the stipulation added that the developer in no way is to encroach upon the property at the creek area past his property line. And I would also like a directive to city staff that they approach the developer and ask if we cannot increase the size of the trees in back from two-inch to three-inch to match the front.
We have a motion. Councilmember Henderson?
That's for a second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, gentlemen, if you will, cast your vote, please. And that motion is approved by unanimous vote. We move now to item number 22, which is Z-016-01. Mr. Alfrink, if you will, please.
Mr. Mayor and council, we have here consideration on and/or action regarding the approval of the application of Ned H. Pugh on behalf of Stephen S. Brown for a vote zoning change request from the C3 commercial district to the C5 commercial district on Lot 1, Block 1, Brooks Edition, containing approximately .6899 acres of land located on the northwest corner of East Belknap and Carson Streets, locally known as 5951 East Belknap Street. And we have the associated ordinance with that. I would also like to point out, just briefly, on this particular case, that this is the first C5 zoning issue that is going through the full approval process since we began this process some time back. This is a previous used car sales lot that has been vacant for over a year. I have been told by our planning and zoning director that this developer has worked very closely with us and very cooperatively. It is, this area is undergoing some extensive landscaping, some extensive repainting of the facility here. It is, they're installing improved parking and improved curbing gutter. This item was also reviewed by our Planning and Zoning Commission with a unanimous recommendation for approval.
Okay. We will open the public hearing at this time regarding this application. Mr. Pugh, are you in the audience? Would you come forward, please, if you'd like to address the group at this time? Give us your name as well as your address.
Yes, my name is Ned Pugh. I represent the owner, Steve Brown. My address is 2100 West 7th, Fort Worth, Texas. Really don't have any comments regarding what we've done to this point regarding the rezoning. Just want to address any issues the council might have, or any questions, or anyone that's here tonight.
Okay. Members of the council, any, any questions for Mr. Pugh? Councilmember Jennings?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had one question that was brought up in a Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, was parking along the east side of the building. I can't remember exactly how many spaces were required, but it was brought up that, that you were going to use some in front, and you were going to take the rest of it off the east side. Are you aware of the fact that they're, that they are reconstructing Carson Street, and there's a possibility that they will take some more right away from the east side of that property?
To my understanding, that Carson was to be expanded to, from the south to Belknap, is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
And we're on the north side of Belknap.
Right.
Is the expansion going to-
Right. I, I was, I understood that at some time, they were going to increase the size of that intersection, and that it might adversely affect the southeast corner of your property. I do not know if that's a factor or not. Perhaps staff may know something about that. James Pulisca, do you know anything about that?
Yes, sir. If you'll load on the site plan, that's why it shows a large corner clip there for Carson and East Belknap.
Okay.
Right.
Okay.
And it is indicative, like you said, of the, of the southeast corner.
Pretty good.
Right. That's why he indicates the design, and if you'll drive by the site, it, it looks like it's almost a square, but in reality, that is his property.
Okay.
Indicating the removal of that corner clip.
I just wanted to make sure anything about it.
And we do have three spaces there now. We're going to have an additional two on the east side, just adjacent to the building.
And what, I'd like to commend you for the landscape work that's already been done there. I know they've done a lot of work-
It's been a combined effort, yes.
It looks pretty good.
It has. Any other questions?
That's all for me.
Councilmember Williams?
This, Mr. Pulisca? I'm sure the P&amp;Z addressed all the drainage problems in that area. Are they?
Yes, they, they did touch on it, and we were assured, and Mr. Pugh and Mr. Brown are working on, on curbing and guttering along Carson at this time.
Okay, that's, that's all I had.
But we did have the engineer look at this as well.
You're happy with the way it drains.
For the particular site. Correct.
Anything further, Councilmember Williams? Any other question for Mr. Pugh? Okay, there being none, I will now call for anyone in the audience who wishes to speak in favor of this application. Okay, there being none, those opposed. There being none, we will now move to the corresponding ordinance. Councilmember Markham?
Thank you, Mayor. We already lined for the floor motion, are we not?
Yes, we are. Did I close the public hearing?
Sir?
Did I close the public hearing?
I believe you did.
Okay.
I move that we pass order 0-030-15.
Okay, we have a motion, and Councilmember Hurley?
Second.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Point of clarification, I'm, I'm wondering if this is not perhaps a typo on the ordinance number? Should it not be 2001, 0-201-030-15? Did they just leave that part off? Or is that the way this needs to be?
No, it should be 2-0-0-1.
I think we probably ought to make that part of the motion. It's just a typo.
Councilmember Markham?
Over.
Okay, it's moved, second, to reflect that correction. Okay, any further discussion? Gentlemen, if you will, cast your vote, and it carries by unanimous vote. We come now to the, we come now to the Minister of Citizens Forum. This time is set aside for any person having business before the council that is not scheduled on the agenda to speak to the council. A speaker's request card must be completed and submitted prior to the start of the meeting. All comments must be directed toward the presiding officer only, rather than to any individual council member or staff. Each speaker must limit their comments to the subject matter listed on the speaker's request card. A five-minute time limit will be, will be granted. Council cannot discuss or debate any issue brought forth at this time, nor can any formal action be taken, as it is not a posted agenda item in accordance with the open meetings law. We have two requests. The first, Mr. Marvin Clayton wishes to speak on the issue of minority affairs. Mr. Clayton? If you will, come forward and restate your name, and give us, give us your address, please.
My name is Marvin Clayton. My address is 5333 Fossil Creek Boulevard, to the presiding officer and the, to the mayor. You know, at this time, I, you know, you know, might I say, light of our city's critics, optimism view our city as one on the brink of a new dawning. Peasimism see it for what they say it could never really be. But realism is born of preponderance unto evidence. Know that's just how it really is. Yet as my life began to interface with this city and its constituency, my ultimate goal and mission statement was to let it be well-known that just because the definition of my existence is defined as black, to not think that ignorance was my inherited trademark. And many still don't know that to judge folk by the color of their skin, in light of the content of their character, is to discredit an entire civilization of people. Yet haphazardly, I was appointed to this Board of Minority Affairs. Then adjacent to this, voted by a group of my peers as chairman of that board, and sullied on the request of their vote, I soon came to realize that what I was doing was much bigger than my petty grievances, and learned that I could either see things prospectively or see things objectively. For you see, to see things prospectively is to see things proportionately. But to see things objectively is when you learn to step back and see the big picture. Yet contrary to this, understanding there are moratoriums that has been put in place with exclusionary tactics urged in the past by those in positions of authority. And for this reason, all minorities, including all women, now have access or recourse to what affects them in this city and the days of their lives. So I propose this idea of having a hotline but- So I proposed this idea of having a hotline, but the entire board came up with the idea of an action line whose ingenuity has been under the directorship of Ms. Sandra Barnett. Might I also add that I've delegated specific duties in the field of expertise to all of those on the board to exemplify certain acts of accountability, never strained from a cohesive style of order. For our mission statement is to promote minority participation in Halton City Affairs by increasing education, awareness, and opportunity. So please listen as I tell you of the addendum. We have a number for the Laotians, the Spanish, the Vietnamese, and in English. And we're hoping that the citizens of Halton City, you know, minorities, women, will feel free to call this number, and we're willing to try to help them in any way we can. We also like to thank Mr. John Patino for being our liaison. We thank Ms. Helen Harris for working with us. We thank Sergeant Mitchell, a liaison from the Police Department, for also coming in and working with us on such issues as this. Thank you for this time.
Thank you very much. The second card I have of someone wishing to address the council at this time, Mr. Russell Owens, regarding bulk trash pickup. Mr. Owens, if you'll come forward at this time, please.
My name is Russell Owens. I reside at 5609 McCaskill, Halton City, 76148. Recently ran into a problem that I think I'm not the only one in Halton City that has this problem, and that is bulk trash pickup. We have none. They do give us one day a year, and that day I had to work, besides the fact I didn't have any way to get the trash to the dump. Had trouble getting them out to even pick up the, well, I did, I cut it up in small pieces and put it in trash cans, and they don't want to pick that up either. That was misinformation that I got. They wanted to come out and put me a roll-off in my driveway, but that was financially out of my ballgame. So I know the contract, the present contract that we have with IESI, or whatever that is, doesn't expire until 2004, September of 2004. I don't know if there's going to be an amendment to the contract or what, but the bulk trash pickup we have right now is by far not helping the city at all. And I just, and I've lived in the city for 20 years and it's been the same problem all the time I've lived here. The surrounding cities have a much better, if you do a little homework, you can find out that the surrounding cities have a much better bulk trash pickup. For all intents and purposes, Halton City doesn't have one. And that's all I have to say.
Okay, Mr. Owens, if you will, I want to ask Ken Slovak to meet with you out in the hall, if you would, to address these issues. Thank you very much. We come now to the portion of our meeting that is focused on announcements of events. Mr. L. Frank, I believe you have one.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have an item of note here that I think many, many citizens here should take attention to and make a note of on their calendar. Coming up soon, we will have, in conjunction with the United States Army Corps of Engineers, we will have a workshop to discuss a Little Fossil Creek Local Flood Damage Reduction Feasibility Study. This public workshop is scheduled for the Halton City Library, 3201 Friendly Lane, on June the 21st, beginning at 6:30 PM. The purpose of the meeting is to inform and receive feedback from interested parties on the recommended plan. Halton City and the Fort Worth District of the Corps of Engineers really encourage your participation at this workshop. If you have questions between now and June the 21st, please contact Mr. Ken Slovak, our Director of Administrative Services. His number is 817-222-7760, or Ms. Peggy Grubbs, professional engineer with the Corps of Engineers. Her number is 817-978-3753. Again, that workshop is June the 21st, beginning at 6:30 PM at the Halton City Library. Thank you.
Okay, do we have other announcements to be made at this time? There being none, I will declare a five-minute recess for the comfort and convenience of those of us sitting up here at the table.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, if we could come back to order, please. We come now to item number 23, which is the Daisy Lane Public Hearing Meeting Date. To give consideration and our action regarding setting a date for a public meeting with concerned citizens for additional action regarding the status of Daisy Lane. I want to make it as clear as I can, the purpose of our meeting tonight and of this agenda item is only to set a date, and really nothing more than that. I know a number of you are here from that, that have concerns about that issue, and I know you have comments to make, and that's the very purpose of the public meeting that we're designed to schedule here in just a moment. I do have one speaker's card, and that's from Mr. Claiborne James, and I talked with him during the break, and he understands that. He just had one little word he wanted to say to the council at this time, so Mr. James, if you'll come forward and give us your name and address and make your statement, please.
Thank you, Mayor White. I'm Claiborne James. I reside at 2103 Oakwood in Halton City, and I spoke before you before, and the only reason I'm up here tonight is to thank each one of you who have visited our street and the consideration that you took to invite a public meeting among all of us, and we thank you for that opportunity. You took our grievance and considered it and decided it should be a public hearing for this occasion, and we appreciate that opportunity. That's all I want to say to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. James. Gentlemen of the council, I will entertain a motion regarding the Daisy Lane Public Hearing Meeting Date. Councilmember Williams?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. We'll tell the public out there that we got together in pre-council and came up with a date that we could all get together on, and that's going to be the evening of June the 28th at 7:00 PM. That will be held in these chambers at 7:00 PM. We will send out a notice to the surrounding neighbors there, I think we said within a 500-foot area, and also if we could get the Star Telegram to put a ad in the paper, we're going to call it a town hall public meeting and have you, and it will be at 7:00 PM, June the 28th, right here in this building.
Okay, you have heard the motion. Gentlemen, I need a second before we proceed. Councilmember Markham?
Second.
Councilmember Avery?
I have a second, sir.
Any further discussion on the motion? There being none, gentlemen, if you'll register your vote. And the motion carries unanimously. So on Thursday, June 28th, 7 o'clock, here in the council chambers, we will conduct a public meeting regarding the Daisy Lane issue. So please be back at that time if you're interested in that, and we will proceed with this matter. Item number 24 is to give consideration and our action regarding approval of an ordinance calling for a bond election for September the 8th, 2001. I will entertain a motion, gentlemen, regarding this item. Councilmember Hurley?
Mayor, as I understand it, in the pre-council, it was more or less agreed on informally that we would table this matter until the first meeting in July.
Okay, you heard the motion. Do I have a second? Councilmember Avery?
I second.
We have a motion and a second to table this until the first meeting in July. Will you register your vote, please? And that carries by unanimous vote. The next item is one Councilmember Jennings asked to be placed on the agenda, and that is to give consideration and our action regarding designation of the official newspaper for the city of Halton City. Councilmember Jennings?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. While we were doing research into our boards and commissions, I ran across ordinance R-793, which by charter was passed to designate the Fort Worth Star Telegram Northeast Extra Edition as the official newspaper of the city of Halton City. Since that time, the Fort Worth Star Telegram has dropped the word "Fort Worth" from their title, and the Northeast Extra Edition no longer exists. All the news for this area is now in what they call the Metro Edition. We would like to keep our ordinances as clean as possible, so I would like to propose that we go and change the wording of this ordinance to drop the word "Fort Worth" and leave the word "Star Telegram" in there, drop "Northeast Extra Edition" and change that to "Northeast Metro." In doing this, we polled other newspapers in our community here and found that the publications that we make through the Star Telegram, we can get done cheaper through them than through the Dallas Morning News, for instance. I'm torn here between my duty to the citizens and my feeling about this particular paper. Certainly, we're charged with spending our money the best way that we know possible. I think changing papers would not be financially responsible, but I have a, I have a serious problem with a newspaper that would call into question the ethics of the people that serve up on this board and commission through their editorial department, and then turn right around and attempt to influence the elections in the city of Halton City by use of these editorials. I find that to be the greatest conflict of interest that a publication could have. So I certainly do not agree with some of the policies and procedures of the Star Telegram, but based on what I feel is right for the city of Halton City, I would like to make a motion at this time that we keep the Fort Worth, excuse me, the Star Telegram as the official newspaper of the city of Halton City, and we change Northeast Extra Edition to Northeast Metro.
Okay, you've heard the motion. Councilmember Henderson?
That's for a second.
We have a second. Any further discussion on this motion? Gentlemen, if you will, register your vote. And that carries by unanimous vote. Item number 26 and 27, the council will take action on items 26 and 27 following a meeting in executive session. However, before we adjourn into executive session, we want to be sure that the citizens who are here who wish to speak on either item 26 or 27 have an opportunity to do so. We have two cards filled out, and if you will come forward at this time, Mr. Ron Sturgeon. We do have some others. Okay? We do have more than just two. Mr. Sturgeon, if you will, come forward and address the council at this time. We have a five-minute time limit. If you will observe that, we appreciate it.
My name is Ron Sturgeon, and my address is 5940 Eden. I'm here to speak in support of stronger controls being administered by judges and to praise Judge Bino for doing his small part to restore discipline and structure from his little corner of influence. Many of the speakers, many of the speakers you may have heard on this subject have stood before Bino and been admonished by him, which I believe can cause them to lose objectivity as it pertains to a review of him or his actions. This shouldn't surprise anyone, and I know you will frame their comments by that knowledge. Some were put off by his abruptness on a ticket, although in virtually every case, they ignored the required deadlines, got multiple tickets, or in general, didn't handle their responsibilities before or after receiving the ticket. My comments tonight are more focused on the critics that don't like the way he handles kids and parents with school attendance problems. I've never stood before Bino, but have read the articles in the Star Telegram, which appear to be objective and unbiased, nor do I know Jack Bino or have done any business with him. My three kids are grown, and thank goodness, did finish school. I have a sister-in-law that recently had scrapes with a Fort Worth judge as her two kids wouldn't go to school, and she didn't want to make them go, although she said she couldn't control them. I was amazed every time I would hear her talking about how unfair it was that she was being fined because her kids wouldn't go to school. I would propose that those parents who don't think that is fair for judges to hold parents' responsibilities fight to change the law rather than criticizing Bino for enforcing the law. Despite being fined over $5,000, which she never paid, and many threats of jail time, she never did make her kids go to school. They both dropped out, they're now unemployed, and the 15-year-old has fathered twins with his girlfriend. I wish the judge had put her in jail, if only for one night, but he didn't. Kids should go to school, we all know that. The overwhelming majority of parents make their children go, and those parents have exactly the same problems with adolescents' rebellious attitudes as the parents that don't make their kids go. Most of the parents deal with it appropriately and never have to stand before Bino. In those rare cases where the parents don't handle their responsibility, the rest of us in society have charged Bino with interceding on the children's behalf. The law is intended to benefit the children, not support or defend the parents. The parents had their chance to handle the situation long before they appeared before Judge Bino. I was shocked when I read in the paper that one parent and child that had been fined by Bino justified her child's dropping out of school to work and pay the fine, since he couldn't possibly work and go to school as well. Parents that think this poorly desperately need Bino if there is any hope for their child's future. I've read the articles about his sentences sometimes seeming inconsistent, but I believe he sincerely tries to evaluate each case on its own merits. Why would parents who can't be objective about their own kids be any more objective about Judge Bino? If they would spend more of their passion and energy making their kids go to school instead of being defensive, they might avoid seeing Bino altogether. Overall, their criticism of Bino sends the wrong message to the kids who are already headed down a perilous course with our justice system. The kids see the parents' criticism of Bino in defense of the judge as validation that it's okay to miss school, and Bino is just a mean judge. If we could be a fly on the wall, we would find those same kids stating that their teachers are unfair to them as well. None of this should surprise us. It's the way kids think. It's normal, and most parents deal with it as their responsibility, not Judge Bino's. These parents are naive if they think the world will be any kinder to their children than Judge Bino if they don't finish school. He is really just about the parents' last hope, and the parents should be thanking Bino for his help, not criticizing. Please reappoint Bino so he can do his part to help kids in school when parents don't from his own little position of influence. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sturgeon. Gloria Smith, if you would, come forward, please. And again, if you will state your name and address for the record, and you have five minutes, please.
Thank you. My name is Gloria Smith. I live at 4551 Hadley Street, and I'm here tonight to say that I support Judge Bino. I thankfully haven't had to appear before him, but I have a daughter and a granddaughter that thought it was their right to drive on our streets rather than a privilege, and they both had dealings with Judge Bino last year. I was very quick to try, and they both went to jail at the same time for unpaid tickets and the fee for warrants and so forth. I was very quick to try to get the granddaughter out. She had a four-week-old baby and a four-year-old son that would be my responsibility to care for, and Judge Bino, in his wisdom, got the word to me that that was the wrong thing to do for the granddaughter. And so grandmother backed off and took the responsibility of the children, and I heard all of the things from my daughter and my granddaughter about how unfair he was, the granddaughter about how uncaring he was that she was a new mother. For some reason, she seemed to think that he should care more than she did about her baby, and that was very disappointing for me, and very disappointing in that my daughter and my granddaughter both chose to disregard the laws of our city and then try to blame someone else when they had to come and face their charges and do their time in jail. I was hopeful that it would teach both of them a lesson. It might have a little, but so far, they both have a long way to go. So grandmother's still there for the great-grandchildren. I thank you for hearing me, sir.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker, Jack Malone. If you'll come forward at this time, state your name again for the record and give us your address, please.
Jack Malone. My address is 1004 Keith Hurst, and I'm here to speak for David Creasy. Gentlemen of the City Council, I am the uncle of David Creasy, and I'm here to speak against the appointment of Judge Jack Bino. I am sure my sister has made you aware of all the facts- I am sure my sister has made you aware of all the facts of this case, so I will not repeat them due to the time constraint on speaking. I do wish to state my objection to anyone in public service such as Jack Bino with power over working people's lives who has no concern or no compassion. This is a tremendous opportunity to perform a real service to Haltom City by declining Judge Bino's appointment to another term, in my opinion. Haltom City is a suburb of mostly blue-collar workers and hard-working people, often of less than adequate means, and while you need the money for running the city, I don't think there are any of you who favor bringing it in, using Max Jacks, as Judge Bino is known, harsh tactics on your people. Decisions against good people who are struggling to support a family on nine and $10 an hour is not my idea of justice. For the offense of David Creasy's 17-year-old son missing 19 days of school, which he was unaware of, now Bino told the Star Telegram reporter that it was with parents' consent. It was his ex-wife's consent, and they did it behind David's back, and he didn't know it, but Bino would not listen to anything. The boy confirmed this, nothing. For the offense of the 19 days of school missed, Bino's assessment of a fine was $571.25. Additionally, he gave David, the parent, three weeks off work to attend school with the boy and bring his attendance record every weekend to the court. Lost wages $1,200. He was behind on house payment then. A single parent having a hard time to feed him and keep him in clothes and send him to school. He went off the school ground on his lunch break to smoke a cigarette. The school security system reported him, and they brought him in. They checked the kid and him out of school for two days. Bino charged him with contempt of court. For this offense, he'll have to hire a lawyer to try to avoid jail time and possible loss of a new job that he had just got. And the first real opportunity to make a living for the family, he's handicapped. Our family has always been concerned that he would be able to go out on his own and make a living. This may be Judge Bino's idea of justice for everyone that comes in his court, but is that the kind of justice you want for Haltom City?
Mr. Malone, you have one minute, please.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Marva Terry. Marva, would you come forward, please? If you will, restate your name and give us your address, please.
My name is Marva Terry. I live at 4425 Knowledge Drive in Haltom City, Texas. For you who do not know, it's out in Jordan Park, right across from North Oaks Middle School. This idea of people, that single people can't keep up with their kids, is a crock. In 1986, I got up one Saturday morning and my husband dropped dead of a heart attack and left me with a 14 and a 12-year-old. My daughter graduated from Haltom High School in the top 10% of her class and now has a degree in education and is now teaching. It is up to the parent, not the school, not the judge, to keep up with your kids and make sure your kid's in school. The school calls you every day and lets you know that your child is not in school. I was very disturbed when I read the latest account in the Star Telegram where they read the riot act to Judge Bino. I've sat several times in the back of his courtroom and watched him perform his justice. I've seen him give women who could not afford to pay the fine, who had a child that wasn't going to school. I've seen him give them community service. I've seen him give them more time to get the kid in school and keep the kid there. I've seen these people come back and show the judge that they've been in school and that they, he dismisses the fine. Judge Bino is one of the best things that has happened to Haltom City in a long time, people. I've lived in this community for 30 years. I've watched many councils come and go. Judge Bino gets very, he can get very tough if you don't do what you say you'll do. If you make payment arrangements on a fine and you don't keep it, when you come back before him, you might as well say, "Goodbye, you're going to jail," and I can't blame you. I mean, that's ridiculous for you to make payment arrangements and then not do it. Judge Bino, if y'all take him out, is going to, this will ruin Haltom City people. You've got your kids where they are looking. You've heard schools, district people say that their attendance is up. You've got the parents' attention. He's also very tough on city ordinances. I live next door to a house that was once owned by Richard Benson. Richard and Marlene Benson died about 10 years ago, and it fell into the hands of their oldest son. The fence is falling down around a pool. The taxes are unpaid on this house. The pool has, right now, is a mosquito trap. Judge Bino is the only person, the only person in about five years that's even offered to try to help us and my man, my neighbor, with this problem. He got Gary Benson into court. He showed Gary Benson that if he didn't do what he's supposed to do, that he would find what the finer jail cells of Haltom City look like. You know, if you and I can't obey the law, so can everybody else. You know, Judge Bino didn't pass this law that stated these kids had to be in school. If I understand right, the state did. You know, do we want a judge that wouldn't, that would not enforce the laws? Or do we want, do we want a judge that says, "Oh, okay, just let them go"? We've already had that in Haltom City, guys. And the newspaper that stated that Judge Bino goes to another part of town and gets people off on traffic tickets, well, our last judge did too, except he was in a law firm right down here on Airport Freeway for many, many years. I mean, this middle, I mean, Calvin, I consider myself middle-class. I don't consider myself, you know, dirt poor. We all are middle-class working people. Some of us make more than others, some of us make less, but we all are in the same class, and this is ridiculous-
You have one minute.
-for the newspaper to butcher an official of Haltom City like this. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Terry. Our next speaker, Donald Arp. Don, if you will, state your name again for the record and give us your address.
Don Arp, 3225 Harris Lane. And the reason I'm up here is that I work with Jack Malone and Laura Bennett, and they asked me to come up here and talk to you guys. And what I wanted to tell you was, is that I guess what I have a problem with is the image that our judge is portraying for Haltom City. The image problem I have is that I can understand telling somebody the last three weeks of school to take your kid to school, maybe walk him to class, but for somebody to have to give up three weeks of their salary, that I think is a little bit above and beyond, which is known as cruel and unusual punishment. Where I work, you have to be there 15 years to get 15 days vacation. So that's, that's what I have to say about that. Now, what I want to talk to you about is my own personal experience. I had a son-in-law who had some traffic tickets, and I told him, I said, "You need to go get those taken care of." He says, "Man, I do not want to go to the courts. I'm afraid to go in the courts." I said, "It's not a problem. All you got to do is call up the court clerk and tell her you want to pay them out." He says, "Man, I still don't want to go." I says, "Well, call them up and see what kind of arrangements you can make." Well, he called up the clerk. She says, "Yeah, come on in. We'll let you make some arrangements to pay it off," because it's several hundred dollars we're talking about. He goes up there and he talks to the clerk, and she says, "You need to go before the judge and tell him what you want to do and tell him you want to pay it out, and then we'll do that." Well, he goes before the judge. The judge has him arrested, tells him he's got two hours to get somebody to pay the fine or he's going to be processed and jailed. So that's my own personal experience with Jack Bino. So I don't feel like he's putting over the right image for Haltom City. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Arp. Our next speaker is Adrena Jennings-Smith. If you would come forward at this time and repeat your name and give us your address for the record, please.
My name is Adrena Jennings-Smith. I live at 3024 Gene Lane, Haltom City, Texas. I have lived there for 48 years. This man in chair one is my son. Let me make myself perfectly clear that the views you hear from me tonight do not necessarily mean they are his views. I don't want to be misquoted in the Star Telegram. Now then, I'm probably out of order before I open my mouth. I've never done this before in my life. The word Max Jack is pitiful. It is pitiful. Now, I understand from what I read a while ago, I've got to talk to you and not look out there to him. That's fine with me. I would like to apologize for some of the citizens in Haltom City that have showed such lack of manners, rudeness, disrespect that have been inflicted on our judge, not only as a person but as to the position he holds. He has done a wonderful job, and my hat is off to him. Mothers and daddies and young people, and I'm talking to y'all when I ought to be talking to them. If you did what was right in the first place, you wouldn't have been before the judge. You don't pay your tickets, you're going to jail. If you don't make your car payment, you're going to walk. If you don't pay your light bill, you're going to be in the dark. They don't go to school. I don't understand that. The phrase, "I can't get my child out of bed." He didn't have any trouble getting up, and I doubt seriously if Councilman Hurley had any trouble getting up. I knew his mother. No, I don't think he did. I don't believe that. And then there's this, "I'm a single parent." That has nothing to do with it. My dad was a single parent. My mother died and left him with five children. Did we get up and go to school? You better well believe we did. We were called one time. Why you'd have thought that we invented school, we wanted to go so bad. Now, we didn't hang out all night. Now, we didn't hang out all night, and we didn't wear designer clothes, but you can bet your life, we went to school and we pretended that's just exactly what we always wanted to do. Parents, the young people today, your children, my grandchildren, are our leaders for tomorrow. Now, how in the world are they going to lead when they're not even taught to follow? Can't be done. It's your job as a parent to prepare your child for the future. You don't control them. The schools can't touch them. Uh-uh, no, uh-uh, don't touch my kid. What in the world am I going to do? I got a ticket, sure did, $168. And when I went before that judge, I didn't bother to tell him because I didn't think he was interested. My son's daddy's dead. I'm a cripple. I live on so-so security. I didn't think he would be interested, so I said, "Yes, sir. I will pay my ticket."
You have one minute to finish, please.
Well, I'm just about there, fella. This is something that my youngest son sent to me that I want to pass along to you. My mama had a Rittlin tree. 'Twas a sure-fire cure for my ADD. Its branches were long and cut close to the stump, and then that tree was applied to my rump. With rapid succession, it was applied to my thighs until the water began to pour from my eyes. But there in our yard, the cure was found. I hated that tree. Its limbs made me hop, but at the drugstore, my mom didn't shop, 'cause when my ADD got the best of me, there always was the Rittlin tree. You remember it, don't you? So folks, as I closed tonight, I knew I was going to run out of time. You have a choice. You don't have to go before Bino. Uh-uh, no, you don't have to. You plant you a Rittlin tree and you administer the dosage, and I guarantee you, the world will be a better place.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Our next speaker, Tanya Main. If you would come forward, please restate your name and your address for the record.
Hello, I'm Tanya Main. I live at 5728 Round Rock Road. The reason I'm here is because I'm an attendance clerk at Haltom Middle School, and so I need Judge Bino's help. We try very hard to encourage kids to come to school. We try to take care of those problems at our administration level, but sometimes, we can't convince the ones that we need to. And I came to court and watched as two of my students in the spring had to face him, and I felt that Judge Bino was very fair, and he did give them the opportunity. They did not have to pay their fines right then. They have to go back in December and show that they attended school every day, and then they won't have to pay any fines. So we do what we can at school, but we can't do everything, and we can't convince everyone that they need to be at school, unfortunately. And we need Judge Bino in the cases where we can't convince them. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker, Donell Sims. If you would come forward at this time, please, and restate your name and give us your address for the record.
My name is Donell Sims, and I live at 1302 Gibson Lane in Haltom City, and I'm also a business owner here in Haltom City. I own Donell's up on Dent Highway, and I come into contact with an awful lot of people. And about 90% of those people that have told me their stories that are dealing with Jack Bino are mostly very unhappy. There have been few that they turned out very good. Now, my experience myself with Jack Bino, when I was pregnant with my second daughter, this was right after Mr. Bino or Judge Bino got into office, and I had been pulled over, or my husband and I had been pulled over because of speeding, and my husband was driving a car. I was pregnant, I was in labor or having labor pains, and I could not drive the car. At the time, my husband did not have a driver's license- At the time, my husband did not have a driver's license. It wasn't because he couldn't have one. It's because, at the time, he hadn't paid the fee to get his driver's license reinstated. Between the time that we got the ticket and we went to court, my husband got his ticket, or got his license reinstated. We went to talk to Judge Bino, and he dismissed my husband's ticket. But I had received a ticket for letting him drive while I was pregnant, having labor pains, and I received the maximum fine for that anyway. My ticket was not dismissed, and I had to pay the fees. Okay, he shouldn't have been driving. That's correct. That's my fault as being a licensed driver, but at the time, I had no other choice. And I felt that I was treated very unfairly. Judge Bino would not even listen to as to why I was letting him drive the car. And if you remember, he dismissed his ticket, but I still had to pay the maximum fine, and I thought that was very unfair. It doesn't make any, it did not make any sense to me. I think that the voice needs to be given back to the people as to whether they would want Judge Bino. Yes, Judge Bino has done a lot of good things for Holton City. He's created a lot of revenue for Holton City. But is that, even that revenue that's being created, being put to proper uses? Our city looks great from Broadway that direction, but from Broadway the other direction, towards Bellknap and so forth, it looks crummy. There's lots of car lots. I have nothing against car lots. Ugly Duckling and that Enterprise, they look great. But there are many other car lots that need a fresh coat of paint, that could use to be weeded around the edges to make it just look nice. These are very minimal things that could be done, and necessarily, the city wouldn't have to pay for it, but these things need to be done. And big projects are being paid for by the revenues. Like, I don't know exactly. I don't have all my facts, but I know that we have new Holton City police cars and new policemen, which I guess we needed. I know that we're getting a new animal center built, and I guess we need that. I know we need that. But the voice, the people, the voice needs to be given back to the people because we live here. We have to be here day in, day out, and these children that are not being, not being taken to school, yes, I think that they need to be punished, but there's children that are repetitively doing things and that the parents cannot make their children do what they're supposed to because they didn't when they were, when they were very small children.
You have one minute to finish, please.
Okay, and therefore, the responsibility needs to be placed on the child. They should go to school. They know they're supposed to go to school, so why not punish the children instead of the parents? But I think that the, that the appointment, it should not be an appointment. I think that the people should have the voice back.
Thank you, Ms. Sims. Our next speaker on this subject, Coleman Sutton. Mr. Sutton, if you'll come forward at this time and state your name into the record and give us your address, please.
My name is Coleman Sutton. I live at 4,001 Creech. That's just off Beach. And I have never had any dealings with Judge Bino. I did hear some rumors. I did go to his deal. All my kids are grown, so I'm not going to get a ticket from that. The youngest one's twenty-five. They all graduated from high school, Holton High. But I don't think, I'm here to oppose his nomination. I don't. I have been there. He... I would appreciate if I ever have to go before a judge, which, God, hopefully I don't. But if I do, I would like to be talked to like a citizen of the United States instead of talked down to the way he does and the way that he talks to people. And he is very arrogant, to my opinion. And I just wanted somebody that really didn't, has never been before him, and I don't have any access to grind, I thought you might want to hear from one of us that don't want his support, but either. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sutton. Keith Hodges, our next speaker, if you will come to the lectern, please, and state your name and address for the record.
Name is Keith Hodges. Address is 4408 Biscayne Drive. And the reason I'm here, I've never been to a meeting like this before, but I went and told my story to Pat Elfrink. And at that time, Pat said that it would be advised if I came and told you my story. And this is my story involving the judge. I received three citations for an inspection sticker that wasn't current. When I came before the judge, the judge asked me what I was going to do about it. I told him my situation, and he told me what my options were. He said, "I need to get the car inspected. I need to get taken care of immediately," and he would give me thirty days to get that done, or if I couldn't get it done, to get the car off the road. It was not acceptable the way it was. But I had an option of what to do, to get it taken care of. And so, I went to see what it would take to get the car inspected. I was informed it would cost one thousand dollars to bring the car up to code. Not thinking that was the most prudent thing to do, since the car was worth about half that, I elected not to do that. So what I did instead is I got a new car. I came back to the judge's court, the day I was supposed to appear, and the judge asked me, he said, "What'd you do about your situation? Did you get it taken care of?" I said, "I did." He said, "So you got the car inspected, right?" I said, "No, I did not." I said, "It would cost me a thousand dollars to get the car inspected. I decided not to do that." You said, "Take care of the situation." I have. I've taken the car off the road. It's in the tow yard. I've got a new car. I've got the situation taken care of. He said, "Not good enough. You didn't get the car inspected. I'm fining you the maximum." Not only am I fining you the maximum, but I'm doubling it for not being taken care of. Plus, I'm charging you court costs. He fined me six hundred dollars when I obeyed the law. Now, I went ahead and paid the three hundred dollar fine, but I still owe two hundred and seventy-one dollars, which I don't have the money to pay. Now, remember, I obeyed the law. I did what the judge asked me to do. When I talked to people about it, they said, "I have not had one person yet that will look me in the eye and say I've been treated fairly." They will say to me, "Well, technically, he can do that," which is a nice way of saying, "Nobody with any compassion, nobody with any justice would do something like that." Because I'm facing, I was facing a warrant on the Fourth of June for this situation. I went to Pat, explained my situation. He moved the warrant back until we could have this meeting. I looked him right in the eye, and I said, "Am I over the line? Am I wrong here? If I am, you tell me. You tell me if I'm over the line." And Pat looked me right in the eye, and he said, "If I was in your situation, I'd feel exactly the same way you do." So, here I am tonight. I owe two hundred and seventy-one dollars. Remember, I paid the fine off. These fines are tacked on. I paid the fine. I obeyed the law. I did everything the law. I got the car off the road. I really shouldn't have even had to pay the three hundred dollar fine, to really be honest with you. The judge should have looked at me and said, "You know, Mr. Hodges, you did your very best. You got the car off the road. You got a new car. You tried to obey. You tried to be a good citizen. You tried to do everything I asked you to do." But no. Don't have the two hundred and seventy-one dollars. I'm coming up for warrant Wednesday. And I don't know what I'm going to do. And so that's why I came tonight, to oppose Judge Bino. Judge Bino is very arrogant in the way he handles people. He's very arrogant. But I came and put that before you tonight because I need a solution to my situation that's coming up in two days. You're my last hope. And also, I just want somebody to be able to look me in the eye, and if they can tell me that I'm wrong, then I want to listen to them.
You have one minute to complete your comments, please.
And in closing, I just want to say this. I don't think I'm asking for anything beyond the pale. I don't think I'm asking for any special consideration. I did what the judge told me to do, and he socked it to me anyway. Now, do you think that's fair? I don't. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hodges. Our next speaker is Laura Bennett. Ms. Bennett, if you would come forward, please, and state your name for, into the record and give us your address. You, I would appreciate it.
My name is Laura Bennett, and I live at 204 Arcadia. I want to remind those people who spoke so eloquently for Judge Bino that circumstances alter cases. Not everyone has a grandmother to keep their children while they sit it out in jail. Not everyone is, has enough money on hand to pay thousands of dollars in fines when they're just barely bringing home enough food to put on the table. Now, that's not part of my speech. Here's my speech. And I want to say thank you for John Williams and all of you council members, and respectfully address you, Mayor White. I'm here tonight to present fifty more signatures I have gathered against the reappointment of Jack Bino as judge of Holton City. This brings my petition to over two hundred signatures. It's two hundred and twelve, to be exact, of people who are in full agreement with me that this judge is too harsh. He's mean-spirited. He's unjust, and that kind of person should not reign over a bunch of struggling people in Holton City. It's been said, "Never fight, try to fight against City Hall." But I think, as Christian people...
Ms. Bennett, if you will, would you address, address me, please?
All right. I'm sorry. I think as Christian people that we should stand, take a stand against evil and injustice, whether in national government, city government, or in our own lives. And certainly, Judge Bino is a prime example of such injustice and evil. He always charges the maximum fine. Then he doubles people's fines, and then he increases fines until they're so high that low-income people can't pay that. And so, without regard to their circumstances, what it will do to their jobs, what it will do to their children, you know, there's another thing besides education that we provide for children, and that's food to eat and shelter for their, for them to have. But irregardless of their circumstances, he sends them gleefully to jail, and it doesn't cost him anything. I think he enjoys it. I think he's sadistic. As far as his considering case by case, let me tell you how it is.
Ms. Bennett, if you will, would you please address the lady?
I'm sorry. I'm used to addressing a church audience. Let me tell you how this case by case and tough love goes. How can he say that he considers case by case when most of the time, he doesn't give you an opportunity to say anything? It's irrelevant. It's, he's not interested, he'll tell you. And let me tell you that tough love doesn't manifest itself in pain and hardship. My telephone's been ringing off the wall since the last article came out and my name was in it.
Ms. Bennett, you have one minute to finish, please.
Oh, dear. Well, he's dishonest. He's dishonest.
Would you, please, address the mayor's position?
I'm sorry. Have it. He's dishonest. When he sentenced my son, who's handicapped, irregardless of him having a new job awaiting him, he still sentenced him to three weeks with no wage or anything. And when, when he started getting flak and hoodie criticism because of that, he told bald-faced lies. He said, "My son was not working." He told that to Star Telegram reporter.
Ms. Bennett, your time is up.
Well, I just want to say one...
Fifteen seconds, please.
One more thing. He told, he told other people that David couldn't even hold a job. When he was working for six dollars an hour at Ross and Coney, he got the, the big whopping bonus of two hundred dollars for perfect attendance, two years straight, not even a tardy. My son's a good man, and we need to stand up for injustice. How many of you, how many of you are here?
Ms. Bennett, your time is up. Thank you very much.
Let the people stand who are against, against Bino.
Ms. Bennett, your time is up. Thank you very much.
Well, someone who else...
Let everybody stand that's against him.
Mr. Finn, I believe you're our next and final speaker tonight on this subject.
Johnny Finn, 4409 Wayne Court, South. Well, I have, I have never been before Judge Bino myself, but I think he's doing a very good job for us in the city. And as Christians, it says, "Raise your children as in the way you'd have them to go." So, just remember that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Finn, and to all of you who have spoken both far and against the subject under consideration. As I mentioned earlier, what the council will do at this time, the time is ten minutes, so ten, the day is the eleventh day of June 2001, the council will adjourn into executive session pursuant to Section 551-074, Personnel Matters, Enclosed Meetings, to deliberate the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment duties, discipline, and dismissal of the municipal judge. Any action that the council takes will, will occur when we come back into open session. We are now reconvening in open session. The time is ten fifty-seven on the eleventh day of June 2001. Gentlemen, with regard to item number twenty-six, I will entertain a motion at this time. Councilmember Hurley.
Mayor, I move that we approve Resolution R. 2001-022-03, setting the judge's salary at quarter four thousand, plus benefits.
Okay, you have heard the motion. Councilmember Patino?
Just for a second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to accept Resolution R. 2001-022-03, setting the salary and compensation for the municipal judge of the municipal court of record for the city of Holton City. Gentlemen, if you will register your votes, that passes by unanimous vote. Item number twenty-seven is ordinance number zero dash two-two-one dash oh-three-three dash oh-three, consideration and our action regarding approval of an ordinance appointing a municipal judge of the municipal court of record of the city of Holton City, Texas. I will entertain a motion in regard to this ordinance. Councilmember Jennings?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I'd like to express my thanks to Judge Bino for what I perceive that he's done for the city of Holton City. We all make mistakes. I'm sure Judge Bino is human, and I'm sure he has made mistakes in the past. We'll all make mistakes in the future. We are charged with appointing someone that we feel will be the very best judge that we can get for the city of Holton City. Judge Bino has proven by his actions to me in the past that he is concerned about our city, that he's concerned about our citizens, and that he is concerned about dispensing justice. It is with great honor that I recommend that we reappoint Judge Jack Bino for a two-year term.
You have a motion before you. Councilmember Patino?
Thank you, Mayor White.
Thank you, Mayor White. That is for a second, and I will explain the reason I will second that motion to appoint Judge Bino. I feel that, first, he was elected by the citizens of Haltem City, and I feel that he served them well. And most of the times, and some of the times, he didn't. He made mistakes like Councilman Jennings did. That's only human. And I don't think it's fair to hold it against Judge Bino just 'cause he happened to be young. I wish I was his age. And it is true, I know, when I used to have black hair, well, people then took me too serious. They always thought I was too cocky, too pushy. They always find a reason to criticize me. I find it, find it much easier now for people to understand me now that I got, that I got white hair. So, maybe if you just kinda wait around and give Judge Bino a chance to prove himself, someday he'll have white hair like I do, and then things might be better. I feel that this council, I myself, I felt that I was not responsible for Judge Bino 'cause he was an elected official. So, therefore, he was not accountable to me. However, if he gets appointed tonight, I feel that now he will be responsible to me. And naturally, I'm all ears. Anytime that he doesn't treat a one of the citizens the right way, I wanna hear from that citizen. And if I feel that that citizen's got a legitimate complaint, then I'm gonna go sit down and talk to Judge Bino. So, based on that, that is my reason that I'm willing to support his appointment. And thank you, Judge Bino, for the time that you have given that citizen.
Gentlemen, you've heard the motion and the second. Any discussion on this motion before I call for a vote? Any comments any of you would like to make? Councilmember Williams?
Thank you, Mayor. I've been on this council probably three years, and this is the toughest thing that I've had to do since I've been on this council. And I've been through a lot of stuff, through the accusations, the lies, uh, stuff reported to the newspapers. I've had a lot of people stand behind me, and I know how it is when you're accused of doing something and you're innocent, how hard it is. Mr. Bino had been accused of quite a few things in the last few weeks, few months. He was elected by the majority of the people in Haltem City. He's been dedicated to Haltem City for the last two years. Many of his judgments, many of his ideals that he's had, I haven't agreed with all of A lot of the judgments or the fines that he's passed, I thought, had been too harsh. I think that this council has something put on him, a burden placed on him by the state that should have never been placed on us. I liked it when it was elected judge, that way the people could say, "This is the man that we elected." Now, it's down to 39,000 people picking seven people to appoint a judge, to be their judge for two years. I had about an hour and a half discussion with Judge Bino Wednesday evening. We hashed down a lot of stuff. I just had another two or three-minute conversation with him back in the council room. I think that we've come to an agreement. I don't wanna tell Mr. Bino how to run his court. I don't wanna tell Mr. Bino how to run his fines. But I did tell Mr. Bino I wanted to treat each person that come before him with dignity and use consideration when he's fining them. I was not gonna vote for Judge Bino when I got, walked out of this room and went back here. And it's a very tough deal, but I will vote to reappoint Judge Bino. I will support him. And if he does not be the type of judge that I feel is my one-seventh worth for Haltem City, my name will be the first name on the petition to have him removed. But I will stand behind him, and I will congratulate you on your new judgeship. Thank you.
Gentlemen, any other comments before I call for the vote? There being none, let me make just a brief statement, and then we'll call for the vote. There is no doubt, Judge Bino is not a perfect judge. I am not a perfect mayor. I don't even make any pretense, and I'm gonna make mistakes. We have been able to address our concerns very openly, very forthright. Judge Bino's taken those into consideration, and I am very optimistic about the quality of the municipal court in Haltem City that we're going to see during the next two years. And some of the firestorm that we, that has surrounded this, this subject the last few weeks, we're looking forward to progress being made in, in those areas that, that triggered the firestorm. We have a good judge. We have a, a good city, and we look forward to, to the next two years, if it is the pleasure of the council to, to, to reappoint. The motion before us is to reappoint the judge. Gentlemen, if you will register your votes, I will post them. And that vote carries by unanimous vote. We come now to item number 28, resignations of board members. Gentlemen, do we have any resignations? There being none, we will call for the appointment and reappointment to boards and commissions. However, yes. Okay. I'm gonna turn your light off until I make a statement, and then we'll come back to that. We need to attend to a procedural matter at this time. Based on, an order entered into the minutes September the 11th, 2000, it was the unanimous vote of this council to ratify each appointment and each resignation, and that those be voted on separately. We have about 45 of those to make tonight, and I would entertain a motion from the council of whether you want to uphold what we have done in the past, where each appointment has to be acted on separately, as far as ratification is concerned, or if you wish to, to bring a waiver of what we have had of, of this procedure. So, Councilmember Williams?
Mr. Mayor, due to the length of the list for appointments tonight, I would like to make a motion that we take each individual council member, let him read off his list of appointments. And if there's no objections, now, we will approve that list under one vote.
So, your motion is that we enact a one-time waiver of this procedure?
That is correct.
Okay. Councilmember Hurley?
I'll second.
Okay, gentlemen, any further discussion on, on the motion before us? If you will, Councilmember Williams?
That was my stomach.
There being none, if you'll post your, cast your vote, I'll post it at this time. And that vote carries by unanimous vote. So, what we will do, we will start in numerical sequence. Councilmember Henderson has appointments to make. He will read those off into the record. And Councilmember Patino, do you have your light on?
I'll go just for whenever we get any...
Okay.
Name our appointment.
Okay.
Could I make a request here?
Please.
Would you ask each of the council members to please pass their appointments to me so far, so I can get those, because I can report them back?
Okay. Members of the council, if you will, pass your appointments to the city secretary. That will make it much easier for her to enter it into the record. We will start with Councilmember Henderson, and then Councilmember Markham. And Councilmember Williams has a couple of appointments to make on behalf of the council, a couple of at-large appointments, and then I have some appointments to make. And we will vote on each of these as a group of each member's appointment. So, Councilmember Henderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to bring before the council tonight my appointments to the boards and commissions for ratification, including for the beautification board, Mary Spencer, 5621 Highland; for the crime prevention board, Tommy Sanderson, 4609 Roxy; the fire services prevention board, Mark Wilson, 3217 Jane Lane; the library board, Travis Royal, 4220 McCombs Road; the minority affairs committee, Sandra Barnett, 4653 Cripple Creek; the planning and zoning commission, Bill Lanford, 2901 Haltem Road; the parks and recreation board, Steve Milius, 2924 Haltem Road; sexually oriented board of appeals, Sandra Sellers, 3424 Meadow Oaks; volunteer services board, Alice Platt, 5609 Whitley; and the zoning board of adjustments, Bob Watkins, 6140 Blue Spruce Circle.
Okay, you have heard the appointments by Councilmember Henderson. He's requesting ratification. If you will, cast your vote, far or against ratification of this group. And those are ratified by unanimous vote. Councilmember Markham?
Thank you, Mayor. My reappointments for this year, planning and zoning board, Mr. Eddie Edwards; park recreation board, Brad Dunn; SOB board, Billy Strong; library board, Joyce Moody; fire services board, Warren Davenport; volunteer services board is Chuck Lanford; zoning board of adjustment, place seven alternate, Dr. Jimmy Gill; minority affairs, Cecilia Garcia. The appointments that I have is the crime prevention board, Mr. Kenneth Hauss; beautification board, Betty Porter. Thank you, Mayor. I ask the council for ratification of these people.
Okay, you have heard the recommendations by Council Markham. If you will, register your vote, and that passes by unanimous vote. Councilmember Williams, you have, as mayor pro tem, a couple of appointments to make on behalf of the council on a couple of the at-large positions that we need to get in place tonight.
Yes, Mayor. First of all, on the economic development corporation, I'd like to nominate Clay Cruthers, appoint him to that, 5813 Jane Anne Street. And on the crime control district board, I would like to appoint Bob Harley. He's sitting six chairs down from me down there. That's his address.
Okay, you have heard the two appointments Mayor Pro Tem is making on behalf of the council for two of the at-large positions. He's asking for ratification. Will you please cast your vote, please? And that carries by unanimous vote. The mayor's appointments to boards and commissions are as follows. All of these are reappointments with the exception of one, actually with the exception of two, and I will, I will identify those now. The beautification board, David Harper, 5600 Beach, apartment number 1316. To civil service, Bob Yates, 2914 Haltem Road. Crime prevention, Vicky Burton, 5709 Denise. Fire services, Royce Gamble, 5328 Bonnie Wayne. Housing authority, Mary Parsons, 2703 Manita; and Darrell Smith, 5313 Santa Rosa. To the library, Rexan Grove, 29, 3929 Emerald Oaks. Minority affairs, Si Song Kam Ennitharath of 3517 Tommy Watkins, and I'm sure that's a, a English pronunciation of, of that name, and I apologize to this gentleman. The planning and zoning commission, Bill Dunn, 4,000 Falcon Ridge; and Susan Hernandez, 5448 Parkview Drive. To the volunteer services board, Nick Pisciano, 5808 Lance Court; to the parks and recreation board, Linda Dunn, 4,000 Falcon Ridge; and to the zoning board of adjustments, Sandra Logan, 5645 McGregor; and Raymond Soloski, 5613 Diamond Oaks North. And gentlemen, those are my recommendations for ratification. If you will, cast your ballot, and those carry by unanimous vote. We come to item number 30. We come to item number 30 on the agenda, and that is the attendance requirements, since everyone is here tonight. We have no, no further requirements. Councilmember Patino?
Yes, I see I haven't got my appointment.
I beg your pardon.
That's all right.
Yes, please, would you proceed?
I don't have many. I just got two. For the library board, Jerry Moore, 5409 Jane Anne. And to move up from an alternate to full member, Mr. James W. White, Jr., that's for the board of, board of adjustments at 5020 Ira Street, Haltem City.
Okay, and Councilmember Patino, I apologize.
No, that's all right.
I've got a one-track mind, and it's late, but I do apologize for overlooking your appointments.
I do it myself pretty often.
If you will ratify, if you'll cast your ballot to ratify the appointments named by Councilmember Patino, and the motion carries by unanimous vote. I jumped ahead to say that the attendance requirements, there's no action required to be taken there. The council will now, at 11:15 on June 11th, 2001, will recess or convene into executive session, will meet in closed session pursuant to Section 551-071 of the Government Code for consultation with the city attorney pertaining to any matter in which the duty of the city attorney under the text of disciplinary rules and professional conduct may conflict with the Open Meetings Act, including discussion of any items posted on the agenda briefing on Open Meetings Act and litigation settlement offers and our claims, as well as Section 55, 551.073, acquisition of real property, and Section 551.074, personnel matters, to deliberate the appointment. We've already done that one. Number two, to review and deliberate the selection process for city manager position, and number three, to review of the city manager's specific duties with regard to special or emergency communication with council and the council's expectation of his performance in this area. We are convened into executive session.